So moved that we move back into regular session.
Hey, is there a second?
Second.
A, any discussion? All those in favor, raise your right hand. Okay, and those opposed? Like sign. We're back at regular session and we left on, off on the action item number seven. And I think that was Councilman Stevens.
Yes, thanks, Mayor, just for the record, I know that Cynthia will document it, we do have a quorum for the meeting tonight.
Okay, thank you, sir.
Yeah, which is important. Hey, I, uh, let me give a little bit of background about why item seven is on the agenda. Let me walk through that background. Then I'd like to propose three areas of discussion. But before doing so, I'll go ahead and make the motion that we discuss and consider appropriate action, if any, with regard to our city attorney, who is also the municipal prosecutor.
I'll second.
Any discussion?
So, yeah, that's the motion, then we can have, so why not with that motion made, now we can have the discussion because
Yes, sir.
Before we can go through that, so with the second and the motion in place, uh, and my sense is we'll have a fair amount of discussion on this topic. Uh, again, uh, I'll talk through the background, what motivated me to put this on the agenda. Talk about the three potential areas or three areas that I think are important to discuss. Would like to handle those one at a time. And then, uh, once we complete the discussion, uh, then we can determine whether or not, uh, there's any action to be taken. Uh, so, so background, the reason I put this on the agenda was to make sure there's alignment between the city council, the city manager, key city staff members, and the city attorney, because there have been a number of circumstances where actions being taken do not appear to be consistent with the charter. Uh, just a reminder for all of us about what does our charter say? Section four point zero four, the city charter states, A, that the city council shall appoint an attorney licensed to practice law in the state of Texas as a city attorney. The city attorney shall serve at will and be entitled to compensation as established by council. Clearly, our city attorney meets those requirements. B, the duties of the city attorney shall be to serve as legal advisor to the council, to all offices, departments, and agencies of the city, and to all officers and employees of the city in matters relating to their official duties. In short, Rod provides advice to all those fulfilling their official responsibilities relative to the city. Second, represents the city in all legal proceedings, so if there's a legal proceeding, Rod's our voice and, uh, and goes with the will of, uh, of council and/or as direction from the city staff. Third, is to perform all services incident to his or her position as may be required by statute. Uh, anything we've got at the state or at the local level, this charter ordinance or is directed by council. The, uh, the third item, which is item C under section four point zero four says the council may retain special counsel at a time it deems such actions appropriate or necessary, which really is all about giving council latitude to pick a special counsel should the council choose to require the services of a, an attorney different than the selected city attorney. As you may recall, there was an item on the executive session from our meeting on September fifteenth that was postponed until this meeting. The day after that meeting, I met with Rod, Rod Ponton in his office. And, and one of the questions I asked Rod, and we had, I think, a good, uh, good discussion out of that dialogue. During that time, Rod stated that he wants to remain to be the city attorney and wants to resolve all issues that may exist. It was based upon that, at that meeting, that I moved any discussion with Rod out of executive session into the public meeting at this particular meeting. And frankly, I have to admit, and I expressed this before, I'm not a fan of executive sessions because as I've learned on my number of years on council, there's a lot of information that's supposed to remain in executive session as confidential. It finds its way out of the meetings and actually shows up in social media. So from my standpoint, was pleased that, uh, Rod had no problem having the discussion out in the open. In my view, there are three key areas for discussion. First is the role of the city attorney when it comes to prosecuting cases at the municipal court that come from members of the city staff that write citations relative to court cases. Second, actions that the city attorney has taken without discussion with council that potentially places the city at risk or matters of policy that may require the city attorney input and ultimately action are not within this purview of the city attorney to make unilateral or take decisions or actions. Third is expectations that the city has regarding the changes that the city attorney should make in order, uh, relative to actions with the city of Alpine. I will understand that there are members of this council that also utilize Rod Ponton for legal matters outside of their role on city council. Those relationships have the potential for being a conflict of interest. And I would comment that when it comes to the discussion we're about to have or any actions that the council may take, with those who currently utilize Rod for legal matters, whether he is paid or not paid for those services, need to ensure that the discussions we're having today are about the best interest of the city of Alpine and that should any action be taken, those who utilize Rod for legal matters outside of the city should disclose that prior to such action. I would also say that during this agenda item, there will no doubt be a number of differing perspectives. And hopefully, we can all focus on the issues so that at the end of the meeting, rather than focusing on personalities, that, uh, that the council will be able to determine its appropriate course of action relative to any regarding, you know, our relationship with Rod Ponton to represent the city consistently with the charter. So that's the background, uh, behind, uh, what led to this discussion. Any questions or thoughts from city council before I go on to each of the three areas?
So far, I have none, sir.
Okay. So, so hearing none, I'm sorry, go ahead, Ramon.
Uh, no questions.
Thanks. And Rod, is that fairly consistent with our discussion that we had in your office on September sixteenth?
It is, I told you that I enjoy serving the city of Alpine and the Alpine City Council as a whole.
Great, thanks, Rod. Okay, so, uh, so first item is the role of the city attorney when it comes to prosecuting cases at the municipal court that has come from members of the city staff that write citations resulting in court cases. And I'd go back to section four point zero four of the charter, one and two, it says, serves as a legal advisor to the council, uh, to all offices, department, agencies of the city, and to all officers and employees of the cities in matters relating to their official duties. And second, to represent the city in all legal proceedings. Those are kind of the top level governing statements. There are been a number of circumstances, some of which have been raised to the city council. Words reported that the city attorney has not represented the city's case well when it came to prosecution in municipal court. Rod shared at least one example with the council on September first, when there were, uh, multiple citations written for a code violation and he felt it was in the best interest of the city to only pursue one of those citations. I know there are other issues that have been put on the table. And I thought it worthwhile for all of us on council and Rod, you know, to listen to some of the perspectives. So I've asked that, uh, three individuals, uh, from the city, I worked with Eric Zimmer to do the invites, uh, and, uh, asked that they provide their perspective. Because I think it's really important that we have alignment amongst council and our city prosecutor in terms of how we pursue cases in municipal court on cases that are, and citations written from code enforcement, which is what will start. And then we'll go on to Chief Martin from a, a number of elements. Uh, and then Jennifer Stewart for her perspective relative to animal control. So David, uh, I would ask you to give your perspective on the type of support you're receiving or concerns that you've expressed relative to, once citations are written by you and/or Tony, uh, how well those are properly, in your view, supported, including, you know, how much communication goes on between you and the city prosecutor prior to the case? And what's your sense is perspective relative to that? And with that, I'll be quiet and let you share your view.
Uh, well, I, I want to be somewhat brief, but into the point. Having a fair and neutral municipal court, uh, is the goal. And so far, um, this hasn't been the case. As far as our department is concerned, uh, with the, the caseload and how, uh, the municipal court has been handled, we've lost confidence, complete confidence, uh, in, in the judge and Mr. Ponton's ability to deliver due process. There's been a keenness to dismiss cases and, uh, and there has been, uh, inability or to be engaged in the process itself. There's some other issues, uh, the way the cases are handled and processed, uh, information provided, uh, by the municipal court, uh, with the regards to next steps and proper forms not being utilized, uh, or to name a few. So overall, we've had a really terrible look with the, uh, city attorney and judge. Uh, we were in a meeting and apparently the Sandy Stewart decided she didn't want to be part of the meeting anymore and I didn't, and left, uh, abruptly. Um, and I didn't have a chance to engage with, uh, Mr. Ponton at that point. So, um, we, we try to hold ourselves accountable for, for everything that we do. And, uh, this is, this is pretty much, uh, effect has affected the perception, the public's perception uh, on, uh, municipal court as a whole. Uh, with, without this type of due process of holding the rule of law, I don't know, I don't know how, how Mr. Ponton, um, i- is going to continue, uh, with being, without being engaged.
So I have a question. I'm wondering, uh, what meeting was this and who was present?
Uh, this, uh, this meeting was, uh, held between, uh, Mr. Ponton, Sandy Stewart, myself, and a couple of other directors, chief of police and, uh, city manager, Eric Zimmer.
Yeah, Lucy, this was the, uh, meeting that I spoke about with council that Rod had suggested. Um, and so I called the meeting and brought Rod, Sandy Stewart, and a few of our key staff members together.
One of my questions for, uh, Sandy Stewart was, and also Rod, uh, Mr. Ponton was the TMC DC bench book not being, uh, employed, uh, during municipal court processes. I never received an answer from that. We, we don't believe that it's been employed correctly.
I'm sorry, say that again?
Uh, the TMC DC bench book, which is the basic, uh, way to operate or the procedures, uh, of court, or procedures. We don't believe that that bench book has been, uh, properly engaged. It hasn't been employed in municipal court.
Yeah, and Lucy, I had shared with council a couple of months ago, uh, those documents, tied, uh, a video as well as those documents.
Can we call that?
I just don't think that that, if the cases have been actively developed and the, and the evaluation of the cases and the management of the cases have not been, uh, up to par. Most of, most of all of the citations that were written were dismissed. And so we still have pending, uh, court hearings, uh, you know, through, through now, through January.
Yeah, and so, so David, you shared with council last night as part of your report, the number of remaining and open cases. And you just commented, you've, based upon the normal caseload, you'd expect to take all those out through January before the existing cases would get worked, is that, do I understand that correctly?
Yeah, that's, that's correct, uh, council. Uh, most of, the, the way that this is going now, despite the March twenty twenty today, we hope that this, this doesn't continue, that the pattern doesn't continue. We, we won't know what to do at that point.
Do, uh, how much dialogue has occurred between you and Rod, uh, prior to going to court? Meaning prior to showing up in municipal court? I, I know there's information that's made available to the city attorney, but has there been any discussions? Uh, does he call you up, you know, during the, the court, uh, itself, to ask for background? Or can you just describe some of that dialogue from your perspective?
Well, there's, uh, there's no, there hasn't been any dialogue with, uh, Mr. Ponton and myself. Uh, I'm, I'm represented unless, I'm represented in court by my designated, which is a co-enforcement officer, uh, Tony Katani. Uh, there's, there's certain times that I would appear in, uh, municipal court, but for the most part, those would be building or fire related, uh, issues. So Tony handles most of all of the citations that he writes.
Okay.
So he may, he may have some dialogue of Mr. Ponton, uh, in, discussing caseloads or cases. But as far as our office, my office, me, myself, and Mr. Ponton, we don't have, don't have any dialogue. We don't, we haven't met and had any meetings.
So what, am I hearing right that you're expecting all of the cases to all be prosecuted?
No. I'm, well, I mean, anything that goes through the, the court, municipal court. We don't even, I don't even have a record if the forms are being completed. Uh, most of the municipal court forms are being filled out correctly.
I think the question was, were all the cases being prosecuted?
I don't, I don't know which cases are being prosecuted.
Yes, uh, that's.
Mayor, council, if I could reply a little bit, the, uh, I've showed up at every municipal court, uh, hearing. Uh, at most of those, I've reviewed the cases in advance, uh, at the court, uh, offices. Uh, these are ticket cases, citation cases. And all that's required to prosecute them is the citation, uh, making sure that the, that the clerk is, has, uh, filled out a, a charging instrument, you know, the document that brings you to court. And that there's going to be a witness there for those cases. Uh, the municipal court secretary, uh, prepares the docket. And the docket is generally ten to fifteen pages long of people that, uh, have unpaid tickets. However, when we come to court, you don't have a, a defendant for every ticket because majority of those tickets, the people won't show up. When the people show up, we have a trial. On every trial, I've gone forward on all those cases. The, uh, you have to recognize that as a prosecutor, our, uh, code of criminal procedure says that the, uh, the, the goal of a prosecutor is not to convict, but to see that justice is done. I don't, I haven't dismissed any cases. It's been allegations that I've dismissing cases sort of willy-nilly and not taking care of the, the docket over there. But the dismissals have to be done by the judge. I don't have the authority to dismiss a case as prosecutor. Uh,
Absolutely.
When there's a case that comes up and the person says, I want to, uh, plead guilty, but I don't want to pay a fine for all these tickets. Uh, there's a discussion between me and the judge, and the judge may reach an agreement with the defendant that, uh, that there might not be a fine paid for all of them. For instance, uh, there was a case where man who didn't have much money was given ninety-seven tickets for, uh, trash in his yard. He was, well, he had car bodies and he was dismantling vehicles and it continued on for three or four months. And, uh, and it was proper to cite him for all of those tickets. Uh, but the judge made the decision that she would let him pay one ticket and, and not pay the ticket for the rest of them if he got rid of all the rest of the trash and cleaned up the yard. That was a judge's decision. Uh, you know, there's other, uh, tickets where people have been cited for multiple, or offense, multiple days for the same offense. And the judge would make the decision not to make them pay a ticket for every day that that was cited. However, I prosecuted those cases and I took those cases to court and presented them. And, uh, the, the practical matter is you could, the city could fine these people for every ticket and every, uh, fine. But the reality is that most people who come to municipal court are the, the, really, they're poor, the, the poorest people in Alpine, really, if you, if you see them through the war, and they don't have much money. You can't jail somebody for not paying a class C fine. And so what are you going to do? So the, uh, the job of the prosecutor is to present the cases in court. And the job of the judge is to decide whether someone's guilty. In other words, whether I presented sufficient evidence to convict the person. And then, uh, the judge can decide whether there should be a uh, conviction on every ticket or maybe a conviction on some of them. The judge used her discretion in many cases that, uh, that Dave was talking about, that disappointed, I guess, the, the building officials. But it's not for lack of us bringing the cases to court. So now if the city council wants to have a policy that every ticket that is written shall be, that person shall be convicted and pay that fine, you could, you could make that policy. But that's not the way courts normally run, they're not really run as a, as a bill to try to.
Well, county force committee doesn't want a policy such as that. I mean, we're not, we're not invisible to make money as a, a department. Uh, we're here to make sure that the, you know, the rule of law is being upheld. What, what we're unsatisfied, what we're not satisfied with is just that we feel that, uh, we're, the fair and neutral municipal court has not been the case. We don't feel that, uh, justice is being served by the prosecutor because of the way that the cases are handled.
So I have a question.
Concern.
If you gave ninety-seven tickets, I mean, that's ridiculous.
Well, this, this individual, um, has had over a hundred and twenty days plus, uh, to clean his property up. Uh, the judge can make a decision on how many tickets he wants to, or he wants to, uh, to actually, uh, serve. But we do that because we're making a statement. And we don't expect all ninety-seven tickets to be paid. We realize that they're not going to be paid. We're, we're under that, we have, we have that understanding. So this, this for over a hundred and twenty days.
Yeah, and that, that particular, yeah, and that particular individual, those original tickets go all the way back to Patsy Escavate, or Pat, I'm sorry, Patsy and Mick Williams. Um, so she was the original person that started writing tickets, um, on that.
So with that, okay, so let's just suppose it's still ninety-seven tickets. I, I, I find that just overwhelming, just knowing that amount of tickets being given to one person. If the person doesn't even have money, maybe that's why that person couldn't pay them. But if there's nothing being done to, to help the people, like in other places where they go and help them, what, what is being implemented also with that, with the code of ordinances as to helping the people getting their properties, uh, cleaned up? Because people that don't have money can't do it.
Yeah, so, so that would be, that would be the role of council, uh, to review that ordinance and make adjustments relative to that. But on the administrative side, uh, we're hired and asked to uphold the ordinances that, that council puts in place.
Yeah, we, we've evaded, uh, over, over sixty citations. But how we, how we give help to, for someone to clean up four or five junk cars in the front yard, I believe that's their responsibility.
There, there's some that, you know, financially they can't or physically they can't. Uh, have we tried reaching out to say, uh, as a scout project or a volunteer project to go and clean those properties up? Because, I mean, ninety-seven tickets, you keep giving the tickets and I'm going like, wow, how much time to spend on this one individual and how about the rest of the city? And, you know, we're just spinning our wheels, giving, issuing the tickets.
So, so let me provide a little perspective. When I came on council, there were four years, four years, not one citation was prosecuted. And the issue we ran into was the building officials, uh, the police department finally said, why write a citation? There's no one going to take any action. And then that's what got us in the issues we're at right now. Andy, it's great if we want to volunteer, but in my opinion, that's something for us to go lead and work as opposed to saying, hey, city, why don't you go off and do something? I'm looking at David's data from last night. Of the citations presented, there were two hundred and eighty-three presented. Uh, and I don't recall over the timeframe, David, was that at the beginning of the year?
Uh, it was at the beginning of March.
Okay, so beginning of March, so for the last six months of the two hundred and eighty-three, fifty-four were dismissed, thirty-one were abated, so that's eighty-five of the two hundred and eighty-three. There were twenty-three pending in municipal court, the rest, I presume, are backlog. Hey, I get when people can't take care of their bills and pay. But I also view that we as council, if we want to change our code of ordinances, we as council got to go do that. We have asked the chief, we've asked David, and we've asked Jennifer to comply with the ordinances if we want to change them, that's up to us. We got to go do something.
Right, and I'm not faulting David because he's just doing his job, him and his, and, uh, and Tony. Uh, I'm just overwhelmed at the amount of tickets given to one individual. Uh, and you're right, Rick, you know, it's up to council to, to make those changes. Okay, you know, we, there was a period of time that, you know, I had a, uh, I guess ceased the employment of two of the municipal judges because things were piling up and they weren't doing a thing about it. And, or they were dismissing where, like you said, APD didn't feel like, why write a citation if it's not going to be prosecuted?
Yep.
So that's why I went through the changes of, of replacing, uh, two municipal judges and then finally, you know, got Sandy. And, uh, I hadn't talked to her in a while, so I thought everything was hunky-dory as far as, until recently, when all this started cropping up. But you're right, yeah, councils are ones going to have to make that choice. And again, the municipal judge is the one that dismisses the case, has the, has the power to dismiss them. Uh, not the prosecutor, you know, he can present his case, but ultimately she's, or he is the judge. Okay?
Well, I think it'll be worthwhile for us as city council members to go to court and watch the prosecutions that occur or don't occur. Uh, and actually get some firsthand experience, the feedback from David and others. And, and you heard from David, his comment, lack of confidence that there's knowledge about the ordinances and the cases going forward relative to the prosecution. There's no doubt it's up to the judge to make that determination. But as we've all known and all seen, some prosecutors can go work it better than others. And I think the message that David is delivering is there needs to be work done to make sure that the cases are properly prepared. And then, to your point, Andy, you know, we have a great opportunity to find a new municipal court judge. I know it's been reported that there have been not a full understanding of the ordinances. I would, you know, if, uh, if you were to go look at the code of ordinances, I'm not sure how many in council have actually read them, worked them, or actually written an amendment to a code of ordinances that we brought back to city council. I know I have multiple times. Uh, and I know Lucy has, I know, you know, Maria's bringing one, but we need to spread out and go look at the building, uh, activities and see what it says. If we want to change them, it's up to us to go change them. activities and see what it says. If we want to change them, it's up to us to go change them.
And you're, you're correct on that one.
I asked a question to David, uh, other than meeting that we recently had with you and me and, and, uh, Eric and Sandy Stewart. Have you ever come to me and asked me to, to start looking more deeply at these cases or express these, these thoughts to me?
Uh, no, I haven't, but you know, here, here's the thing. The, if the bench foot was employed correctly, uh, it, it gives directives as far as indigent violators. So there, there's directives for that. So there, there's ways of helping and defer, and defer dispositions. So the, the process doesn't change. I mean, you as a prosecuting attorney, uh, realize what, how you need to be engaged and how you need to prosecute the cases.
Now, I think what we need to do as a council is to have an ordinance workshop where everybody's knowledgeable of the ordinances and you include it in there. So you can explain to us, you know, what you're facing. And this way, you know, maybe we don't have to get to this point that we are at today. But I think, uh, it'd be a good idea to have the entire council sit at a workshop and just go with the ordinances. Some need to be amended, some need to, uh, be deleted or whatever, but you know, let's do a joint effort of all of us to do this. And let's get a resolve on this. Cause this has been an ongoing issue way before you, uh, Dave. So, you know, uh, you're not the only one. Uh, when I first, before I even got on council, you know, I heard horror stories and I'd visit with some people, uh, about ordinances and stuff like that and citations. But I think all of council needs to be fully aware of what they are and how they are to be implemented. Any thoughts on that, counsel?
I agree. I also, I'm sorry.
Lucy was on.
Yes, I agree with you, mayor. I also remember that, uh, there was, uh, the fee schedule for the ordinances that we never finished. We were supposed to get those done and that was way back when Jessica was here. If, and I want to say that Rick had started implementing that particular fee schedule or something like that. We needed to finish it and I thought that we were going to bring in other people like the plumbers and the contractors, uh, electricians and all of those to give us those, uh, feedbacks also. Cause I've had people also that are getting permits that have come and told me that the way they are getting done, it's, uh, that it's too much and it's a repeated thing for everything. So I think that that should be part of the ordinances, uh, workshop, but I think we, we need to do that.
Right. To, to cover, uh, contractors and, uh, and builders and perhaps be with, with David.
Wait, 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 yeah, wait, wait a second. We're talking about code enforcement here. We're not talking about permit fees. Right. If somebody doesn't, I guess. Somebody doesn't go get a permit, if somebody doesn't go get a permit, then they would be citation. But we did go through the permit fee structure earlier this year and we did update the fee schedule on the permits. Relative to code enforcement, after Sandy Stewart's, um, last presentation in the, uh, earlier this year. Um, well, let me back up. In January, when David first presented, uh, one of the things that, that David had talked about is when we engaged code enforcement and when we started writing citations, that there was going to be feedback within the community. And that these issues were, were then going to go through municipal court. Um, subsequent to us starting that, that process in March, Tony was, was trained and certified in February and then went out, uh, in March, um, subsequent to that Sandy Stewart gave a presentation to council, um, and, uh, was concerned about some of the tickets. If you recall, I then gave a response to council, sent a very detailed thorough email along with an attachment on code fifty, uh, or chapter fifty-four of our book of ordinances. The reason why I shared chapter fifty-four was because that was the point in question. One of the things about the regularity of tickets, um, and council, um, just making sure council is aware in the ordinance, it does call for, um, that day-to-day ticket. Uh, at that point, and I shared in that email that I had asked Tony to look at that from a once a month perspective. So if the person didn't show up for court, then once a month he would go back out there from that point forward. Uh, that was a little deviation from the ordinance, uh, but, um, I thought that would give council time to then go in and look at chapter fifty-four ordinance. Plus the worksheet that I've shared with council relative to which ordinances are top of mind and top of need. Chapter fifty-four was listed on that. So just wanted to kind of show some of the timeline through this, the course of this year and, and what we have discussed and, and, uh, the duration of those.
Let, let, let's look at the big issues for a moment and, and I'm going to refer again back to what David presented last night. The number one issue in the city of Alpine where citation has been written for is junk vehicles. Is there any disagreement that we don't want junk vehicles parked on front lawns or property in Alpine? That's number one. Number two, illegal dumping citations. I got a call today on people dumping illegally. I turned it over to the city manager to go off and work and dumpster's not getting dumped. Number three on the list, building code citations. You know, those are, you know, uh, David's got to work those in terms of violation of building code. Number four on the list, and they're tied to number five, one is nuisance citations. This what I'll call general crap around, uh, dangerous conditions and littering. Those are the citations that are being written that we as council, is there anyone who believes those are inappropriate citations? If there are, then we need to go focus on changing the code in that area. The rest of them, high weeds, fire safety, discharge of grease, uh, you know, illegal parking, illegal sign citation. Those are the nit noise stuff. It's the big items. Frankly, the mayor's been talking about this since he's been the mayor. Clean up the city, keep Alpine beautiful, get rid of your tires, get rid of your trash in your front yard, get rid of the vehicles. This is where I'm looking and saying, this isn't that hard in my view. Uh, but if we want to change the ordinance to allow people to leave junk on their front yard, we ought to go focus on those because that's where the issue is.
Yeah, no, and you know, I, I agree with it because yes, I've been, I guess, screaming about the junk cars and, and all that, that in this. And a lot of it is, is, you know, finally little by little cleaned up, but there's still quite a few, uh, junk cars, tires that are stacked up and stuff like that. Uh, and I always complain about people dumping at the dumpsters.
Yep.
You know, mattresses, when they can be picked up when they buy a new one, whoever sells it to them usually picks up the old one, will pick up the old one at no charge. And they dispose of it. But no, and, you know, and I know David's got a hard job. I mean, that, I wouldn't have that. That's a tough gig and, and, you know, they've got to decide, you know, which are the major ones that they do, do need to cite.
In my opinion, the question on the table is, are we going to allow people that say they don't have money to leave junk cars in their front yard and those who have money not allowed to? Or are we going to ask to uphold the ordinances and then ask the other volunteer organizations are taken upon ourselves to go help those in our wards who may not have the wherewithal to take care of that. It's not appropriate to ask David or Tony to go do, we're paying them to go take care of, to make sure we have a safe, clean environment, highlight issues to us. And then it's our job to rally the resources in Alpine that we got tons of them, we're willing, people willing to volunteer their time. But in order to make that happen, people have to say, oh, if I park a car in my front yard, let the tires fall off. Yay, someone's going to come knocking on my door and give a citation. Whether it's one or a hundred, frankly, my view, that's going to get settled out. But without action, we're just going to get more junk cars in the front yard. So, uh, we probably ought to move on because we got lots to, to go through tonight. David, anything else you'd like to add?
Well, no, thank, thank you. Uh, but we don't, we don't operate any differently from any other city in the, in the state of Texas. I mean, our department operates just like every other city in the state of Texas. So it's, it's a kind of a cut, dry deal. We write citations just like the next city.
Dave, I'd like to.
Uh, Mr. Mayor, Mr. Mayor. If I may, I'd like to inject, uh, I'd like to just say a couple of things. I've been sitting here listening to all perspectives and I'd like to say first of all that, uh, David and his crew, they're doing their job. And I, from what I hear, uh, the city attorney and, and the, uh, the presiding judge are also doing their job within their scope in good faith. Uh, but it comes to a point that I think that about the five issues that, uh, Councilman Stevens mentioned, it seems to me like maybe, uh, the ordinance is governing those issues we need to take a look at. And, and in our respective wards, uh, whoever's in charge should, uh, look closely in, in trying to find solutions to help residents. Um, maybe get rid of those junk cars or tires or, uh, educate people about not dumping bulk items at, at trash bins and et cetera. It seems to me like, um, as a council, yes, we establish policy, but we can also change policy. And I'm not saying change policies to allow these things to occur, but, um, we need to be maybe a little bit more creative in helping our residents. And that way, helping them, we help ourselves as a city. And, um, but overall, I think everybody's doing their job, but we've, we've got to focus on, on those, um, ordinances and maybe give a second look and, and, and try to be able to create it with them. Period.
Well said. Uh, David. David still on? Yeah, David, would you be opposed if we had, uh, a session concerning ordinances with you, with you there to kind of explain to them and, uh, also with the, with the prosecutor? So we're all on board where you're coming from, from your department.
Uh, that, I definitely, any, anytime my doors open. So.
You know, and I put this as a challenge to the, to the council, you know, to come up with some ideas also to alleviate some of these issues. And to, you know, kind of force the prosecutor, kind of help the prosecutor and David's team and clean up the city. You know, there's, there's definitely a problem, you know, and I think money's a problem. Maybe we can come up with, with some ideas to, how to get, you know, how to help these folks out. Because I know it's, it's, it's a issue for, well, it's tiring for David and his team to go day after day to the same location. And, you know, it gets frustrating.
We, we work closely, like, like I said, I mean, our department's evaded over sixty-seven citations. It's the repeat offenders, the people who are not compliant, um, who have, uh, no intentions of showing up for court, um, or municipal court, uh, those are the ones that received heavy citations. So we do work with a lot of the residents. We've got, Tony's got, he's been done a fabulous job on abatement and actually helping residents, uh, remove, uh, older senior citizen residents who can't do it and don't have any children to help. And Tony's out there helping them on a daily basis. So. But I, I'm, our department is open.
Okay, great. I'll stop and visit with you guys.
Yeah, the point about having a workshop.
Yeah. Yeah, I think council can decide on having the workshop, Lucy. Uh, and we're, all of us will attend on it. You know, I know that, uh, Councilman Stevens is pretty versed up on those ordinances. Uh, and, you know, he could spearhead the explanation of them along with, with, uh, with David.
Yeah, I, I, I'll just give you five points directly out of section ninety-four dash five thirty-six, abandoned and junk vehicles, since that's a big item for the city. An abandoned motor vehicle means a motor vehicle that's been inoperable for more than five years. Okay, five years and left unattended on public property for more than forty-eight hours. Okay. So that's been sitting on the street for more than forty-eight hours, hadn't worked for five years. That ought to be pretty easy to cite. Has remained illegally on public property for more than forty-eight hours. Has remained on private property with the consent of the owner or person in charge or without consent of the owner for more than forty-eight hours. Has been left unattended in a right of way for more than forty-eight hours. At best left it unattended for more than twenty-four hours on a right of way. So in my mind, th- these are pretty self straightforward things that prior to us coming together, it'll be very helpful if we just sit down and read it. So we walk into as opposed to Dick and Janey line by line is going through, it will take forever to, you know, work our way through that.
Right.
Uh, you know, and it talks about the notice under section A of this section must be sent in certified mail, not later than the tenth day after the date of the apartment where the vehicle's been abandoned. So there's ten days. I mean, there's a lot of things we've specified. Uh, and I think with that, with appropriate elements. So my, my view is, and, and to the point that David's raising, those that are the new ones, I'm not worried about that. This is about the repeat offenders who say, I'm just going to ignore it. And frankly, they're winning. They are winning because we as a city are taking no action. That's the frustration I think David's expressing.
Yeah. That's, that's it in its entirety.
Okay.
Anyway, David, David, your team is doing a great job. You know, don't get me wrong.
Thank you, Mayor.
Okay.
Okay. I think we need to move on.
We're, we're, so mayor, we'll move on. I'll move on. The next one, I want to move on to Chief Martin. He's next on the list. Uh, very similar questions to Chief. You know, uh, your perspective and the type of support you're receiving when it comes to cases going to municipal court, include any specific examples? Rod Potton has talked about, uh, a case or two, but I'm sure there might be others there.
Thank you, Mr. Stevens. Um, I'm going to back up, uh, a little bit of, go back to, uh, myself and, uh, David Hale and, uh, others that are involved in the courts. Uh, as you all know, where I came from and what I did for the sheriff's office and in my twenty-something years of experience testifying in court of the level of professionalism that I don't see in our municipal court. And these, uh, this unprofessionalism was identified and we, uh, approached city manager, Eric Zimmer, and relayed these concerns. And it ranged from a numerous number of things from things that I had, had observed or not observed. Uh, one of them being when, uh, a defendant received a citation and was called to the bench that I, to this day, I have not heard a, uh, a probable cause statement read of what the charge is by the prosecuting attorney. Uh, and that's when that's, that's something that happens in every court. Another thing that I observed was there was defendants and witnesses that give testimony in a hearing that were never sworn in. You know, that, that, those items like that was brought to Mr. Zimmer's attention. And Mr. Zimmer started attending some of the, the court proceedings. And only at that point, I don't know if, uh, the judge and Rod got word of some of our concerns, but they started swearing in people that were testifying in court. But it was only after that. Um, in the dealings on a personal level with Mr. Potton, uh, I started out early having issues with him recommending dismissing citations. And I met with him and shared my concerns that, and my question was, is why are you going to miss a, dismiss a citation prior to even hearing the evidence in the case? I didn't understand that. And it, it continued to happen and I documented it all in an email and sent it to Mr. Zimmer where Mr. Potton tried to dismiss a citation on, that was written around Fourth of July where there was multiple fireworks citations. And again, that goes back to city ordinance violation where his argument was the, uh, fireworks didn't pop. Well, you know, defendants. Well, you know, defendants don't always tell the truth. And in my email, I stressed to Mr. Potten that if you have an issue with the ordinance to take it to city council. But I'm going, by the way, the ordinance is written and I am going to write, our officers wrote the citation and it's not your job to dismiss it. That, that caused a bigger uproar. Okay? I don't know why Mr. Potten felt compelled to recommend dismissing it, but he did. And I visited with him and Sandy Stewart, the judge, and the determination was made to make this one individual come to court. In the end, he ended up paying the, the fine and this is after there was a total of six fireworks violations cited. I'm sorry, seven. My question is why is those six going to pay their fines and this one is going to be dismissed? Because I know this keeps going back to friendships, but is friends with the sheriff and the chief deputy? He is no better than the other six that received the citations.
I'd like to respond to that if I could.
No, I have the floor. Thank you. Then after the determination was made to continue with the citation, I received another email from Mr. Potten's office requesting a dismissal. I brought that to their attention and again, it, it was not dismissed. The young man eventually ended up paying the citation. There's, there's been a number of things dealing with Mr. Potten that I have issues with. And I'm going to back up even prior to me going to work for the police department. That I have concerns that I had, was the bailiff in a district court case where Mr. Potten had a defendant in court and said certain things. And in the court, a month later, said different things. The judge come off the bench, came to me and asked me if I remembered what Mr. Potten said the month prior. And I said, yes, I did. And asked me, do you, you understand what Mr. Potten is saying today? Yes, I do. And the judge actually asked me if Rod Potten was lying in district court and I, my answer was he is not being truthful. Another issue I have, another issue I have is at a city council meeting, Mr. Potten came to me and expressed to me that currently there is an officer, y'all are aware of the officer under indictment at the police department and expressed to me that the case was going to go away. I have to have a big issue with that. He has not heard any evidence in the case. But I want city council to know one more thing. It was a matter of days after I was appointed chief that Mr. Potten called me to his office at his request, okay? Set me down and told me that I needed to fire two of my officers that have been here for over twenty years. Those officers being Daryl LaSoya and Philip Fiero and build the city to tell me that.
Thanks, Chief.
Okay. Is that it, Chief?
Oh, I have a number of other things, but I'll leave it there for now.
Okay, Rod, I think you wanted to say something?
I certainly did. The, I never told the chief at a city council meeting that some police officer was going to have a case dismissed against him. That's just false. I don't know what he's talking about in district court. If, if that happened, I presume that the district judge would have done something about that or brought that to my attention. I've never, that's never been brought to my attention. And so I don't know any details about what he's talking about on that. The issue of me summoning him to my office and telling him to fire two of his officers was a lie. I never told him that. So.
Counsel, right there is what I'm saying. I'm willing to take a lie detector test. And I would like for Mr. Potten to take a lie detector test to show him that he is being untruthful tonight with counsel. Okay? And I can tell you that I don't trust him. And my officers don't trust him to do his job as a prosecutor for the city of Alpine.
The counsel, I was asked some questions last night by Councilor Stevens about a number of cases that, that may be arrested by the Alpine Police Department without probable cause. And I told Councilor Stevens last night that I would work on that and bring him back and report on that. I went and checked today with the Brewster County Attorney who deals with misdemeanors filed with Brewster County by the Alpine Police Department. Earlier this summer, he had thirty-nine cases that people were arrested for misdemeanors, but there were no cases filed. There were no case reports filed, nothing for him to prosecute based on those cases. He checked again in, on August twenty-second, two thousand twenty, there were thirty-seven open cases at the county attorney's office for cases that were arrested, but once again, no cases, no case reports were filed. Since these issues have popped up into public and there's been some publicity, et cetera. The case files, the case reports have started coming into the county attorney's office and he's now down to only twenty open cases that are pending in his office without case reports. I asked the county attorney if the if he had this, these issues with sheriff's office or DPS or Sol Ross of having people arrested, but no case reports to back up the arrest. And the reply was no. So I, I know that the chief has some personal issues, but on the other hand, the, the reports I made to the council about the police department were to try to alert the council in hopes that the police department may have some ability to eat some of these things and, and respond accordingly.
So Rod, I presume based upon that new information you've just provided to council, you'll provide that information directly to the city manager, to the police chief and council, not later than nine o'clock tomorrow morning? With specifics of the date, the case, and whatever actions have been taken thus far?
Well, I don't have the specifics on the case.
You just made an allegation without fact.
I made an allegation based on a report to me by the, by the Brewster County Attorney.
Yeah, without, so, so that's great. We've heard lots of rumors. The frustration we all have is we hear all of these things going on, we never see facts and data. So if the Brewster County Attorney has that, in my view, an action that you ought to take to protect the city, which is part of your role according to the charter, is to go get the detailed information on that so the city and the council can take appropriate action.
And I told the county attorney I was going to follow up to get that specific information, but I'm not going to have that information to you by nine o'clock in the morning.
Fair enough. So when could we expect it?
It'll be next week.
Okay, sounds good. Okay, that's a step in the right direction.
Okay, can I say something else?
Yeah, one more thing.
And then, and then we have to move on.
I would like to, to inform the council that there is an active investigation going on. Actually, there's two going on in the city. And I've been advised by the attorney general's office that I can't say who, but there is a number of individuals being investigated at this time.
I think that.
One investigation started back in March. And I can't disclose who it is, but this person has a problem with the Alpine Police Department. Okay, the investigation is, is continuing as we speak, that the AG advised me this morning that they have formally taken the case. And I think what Rod is, is talking about may have a lot of bearing on what y'all need to know that I can't disclose.
Okay, Chief, I think that should be kept confidential.
Yes, it should.
Because it's been thrown out now in public. Okay, because this is an open session.
That's right.
Okay, so I think that is something that should have been kept in, within your department, within yourself. I, I know you didn't, but you threw it out there.
That's right.
And I think that's, I think that's something that is between you and the AG. Okay?
And the defendant. Mr. Mayor, Mr. Mayor, I have a question for Mr. Potten, please. Rod, how truthful is it that you mentioned to the, our chief that you should get, that he should get rid of two people on his staff? One is Mr. LaSoya and I've forgotten the other gentleman.
I did not tell him to fire Daryl LaSoya or Philip Fiero.
We can argue that to the cows come home.
Yeah, so I think Ramon, what was your point, sir?
I basically was, to get an idea from both perspectives, one says he did, I wanted to find out from Rod as whether it's true or not.
Yeah, and that's going to be a he said, she said, because that's where it's, it's going to right now. Okay, so I think that we need to move on.
Okay, so.
I'm not trying to cut you off or anything like that, Ramon, but we could be there all night long going back and forth.
I understand.
Okay, thank you, sir.
So, so, so moving along, the other one who writes citations, and I don't know if Jennifer's on the, on the call tonight. If she is Jennifer, Chief, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Counsel, Jennifer, is she on? Dealing with an item, but she's on now. Yes.
Okay. Sorry about that, you guys. Um, so, go ahead.
Go, go, go ahead, Jennifer. If you've heard the background, we're just looking for perspectives on your view about going to court and the type of support you're receiving and with any specific examples.
Right, so back in, I believe it was August, I submitted my concerns to all and I'm not sure if y'all had gotten those. Did you receive those? I had, I had, I'd gotten into a little bit of detail, but I'll go over some of them with you tonight. So my, my concerns are that we have some cases that have been sitting there. One in particular, when I wrote this up was eight hundred and eighty-five days old with a gentleman that we continue to have problems with. He, he continues to be in violation. We continue to cite him and we are not getting any resolution. They just sit there and we're not having any teeth in the situation because these people are not being brought into court. He's not the only one. I, I did overhear that somebody else had that issue. Really, it was chief as well. That it's just not, we're not seeing these people in court, so it's kind of a dead end with some of the citations. This particular individual I, I have been dealing with my entire career, so this is not a new issue. It's just new animals. In regards to the docket that was in, back in August, we did have a running at large citation dropped. And I, I don't want to go into any personal details of the, of the person that was involved, of course, but her citation was, was dropped and we, we had several instances where the dog had come into the shelter, but we didn't, we didn't personally pick it up. So this was her first citation in regards to running at large, but we had seen the dog several times due to the public bringing the dog in. If Rod had looked into the file, I, I believe I had submitted her history with the, the dog in particular being present in the shelter multiple times. So just, my concern is that maybe looking over the cases prior to court so that we're better prepared and we can, you know, you see the details in, in some of these charts, even just in, in a complaint that's written up by an officer. It should, you know, give us a little bit of teeth in the situation. That's just coming back to, you know, having evidence, a little bit of evidence, which I'm trying to, I'm trying to get better at submitting into the files, but they need to be looked at. We've had an, another instance with, with a woman who actually had a complaint about her dogs running, or her neighbor's dogs running loose. And this case in particular had gone on considerably longer than it should have to the point where the woman was actually, the dogs actually approached her in, in the streets and could have potentially led to an injury. Fortunately, it did not, but I think that if we would have had the hearing addressed earlier, we might have, we might have had a different outcome. So just, I mean, my main, like, my main concern is just our our files getting looked at prior, questions being addressed to us if there is any by our Rod Potten, our city attorney. You know, even just being able to talk to him beforehand. Some of these are cut and dry, you know, running at large, cut and dry, no license, cut and dry, no microchip. I mean, that's, some of those are pretty basic things, but some of them can be a little bit more detailed. So especially these repeat offenders that need, need to, need to be held accountable with charges.
Thanks, Jennifer. Counsel, have any questions for Jennifer?
No, none.
So, so, so if I were to summarize, Jennifer, from your perspective, it's simply looking at case at a time and you two are facing the repeat offender issue that seems to plague building department in the same way and, and therefore people just ignore and don't follow up and take action?
Yes, there's, they're not being called in, so they're just getting citations piled up and they're not having to pay. You know, like I said, I had a gentleman on here for, the case had been, I think it was August fourteenth that I did this, right? It's you guys, eight hundred and eighty-five days on the docket. Eight hundred and eighty-five, and that's a long time.
So, so there, there is no question, and I'd like to bring this section, because we've got three to go through, and I'd like to bring this section to a close. My, my sense is, and, you know, there's two parts to running the court, actually three parts. One is citation and having evidence to support it. The second is the case that the prosecutor presents to the judge, ultimately it's the judge that does in fact make the dismissal. But there's got to be a strong case on the part of the prosecutor to be able to support and go through to make sure that the judge understands the situation. We can't hold the city attorney accountable for any decisions that the judges make, because that's why we hire a judge and we're about to go find another judge for the municipal court. Nonetheless, what we've heard from three people who are responsible writing citations is a lack of confidence about how strongly these cases are being presented so the judge can make an appropriate determination. And again, it has to do with consistent repeat behavior.
What I'm seeing here, I think the, the David, Jennifer and others that issue citations, I think they need to have a meeting, periodic meetings with the prosecutor to make sure that all their ducks are lined up in a row and, and ensure that they will be prosecuted.
I'll make sure I do that with both of them in advance of future dockets, Mayor, once we have a judge in place.
But you, you broke up there, Rod.
I said I'll make sure that I sit down and visit with David, his staff, and with Jennifer and her staff in advance of dockets. in advance of dockets in the future, once we have a municipal judge to hear the cases.
Right, and also with the chief.
Yes.
Okay.
So, I'm curious, whose job is it to bring them in?
The court, the court brings them, the, the court clerk sets up the docket based on the cases that are open, for people that have, uh, not paid their fines, and, uh, some people just ignored it, and some people say, I want to go court. So, she puts together the list of all of those that are pending and sends out notices to everyone, and then we come to court with the ones that are present. The ones that are not present, she can then issue them a new ticket for not coming to court.
He can issue, that the city, municipal judge can issue a warrant to appear.
Right, I thought we, I thought we had that in place already with Sandy, that issuing warrants and having a warrant, uh, roundup. Because I thought at one time there was, uh, uh, quite a few number of folks that paid their fines in advance. I think one was pretty steep, and all of a sudden here he comes, bam, I got the money, don't arrest me. So, I think issuing those warrants are critical, you know, uh, to resolving a lot of these issues. And I thought that was a step in the right direction, then it kind of just fell by the wayside. I don't know, because I'm, you know, I'm not privy to the court system. But I think that's.
I didn't, I thought it was the, so we're saying that it's the judge, not Rod's, right?
Right.
It is the judge. My sense is we have been consistently inconsistent.
Correct.
Okay.
Go ahead, finish, Rick.
Can I move on to item number two, please? Okay.
Yes, sir.
Item number two is a really important discussion between the city council, the city manager, and the city attorney relative to the actions the city has taken without discussion. Uh, the attorney's taken without discussion that places the city at risk, or are matters of policy that while they may require city attorney input, they are not within the city attorney purview to decide policy. There has been a significant discussion about the jail and the magistration issue. I do not want to rehash what was discussed yesterday in city council. There are, however, a number of related matters that come to focus that place the county, or the city, rather, in my view, at significant risk. I'd like to highlight some of those actions for the council, and then have a discussion with the city manager, the city attorney, and council relative to our expectations of the city attorney relative to those, uh, issues, and understand why actions were taken. The first is, and they do center around the magistration issue, but again, I don't want to go through magistration and magistration and all that. I want to talk about actions that were taken. It is a fact that the city of Alpine, uh, has been refused allowing the Alpine Police Department to put, uh, arrestees or detainees into the, uh, county jail long before this current issue that bubbled up relative to magistration. There are cases that go back to last summer while Russell Scousen was still here, uh, and cases that have continued on, you know, prior to last Christmas, and ultimately it came to a head. So that's a fact, okay? In June, you know, the Brewster County Sheriff's Office issued a procedure requiring wearing of masks and taking a temperature in order to intake prisoners in the Brewster County Jail. Uh, to his credit and based upon discussion with the city council, the Alpine, uh, city attorney sent a letter to, uh, uh, that said, and, and he sent a letter to us, giving us background, that, uh, that said that regardless of this health status of an inmate, the sheriff must take custody of prisoner if a prisoner is committed to jail by warrant from a magistrate or court. So, so far, things are percolating along well. Earlier in September, however, the Alpine City Attorney filled a TPIA, a request, a records request that was sent from Stephen Paulson of the Big Ben Sentinel without advising or gaining approval from the city. That's a city responsibility, city secretary is responsible to go work that. However, that's a case that the city attorney appears to have fulfilled unilaterally to meet a TPI request, and that's not a purview of the city attorney. On September first, the district attorney Sandy Wilson sent a letter to Judge Canno, Sheriff Dodson, Eric Zimmer, and Chief Martin requesting a meeting ASAP, asking the sheriff to immediately retract the after-hours magistration requirement for the Alpine Police Department. Uh, two days later, uh, the Alpine Police Department was informed by our city attorney that the Brewster County Sheriff had made informal allegations of possible misconduct by Alpine Police Department officers. No formal complaint was ever received, and so I'm glad the city attorney, after now it's been over a month, has finally requested formal information about that. Uh, the verbal, uh, information that was provided, uh, the chief investigated, consulted with Texas Ranger Jeff Bottos, who agreed that the allegations would be properly handled as an administrative matter of which they had done, and I know Chief Martin had met with the Texas Ranger and reviewed that back in September. On September sixth, a YouTube was released of the APD, the Alpine Police Department Body Cam, by a current employment of Sheriff Dodson's gun store. The video was shared on Facebook by employees of the Brewster County Sheriff's Office. On September eighth, two days later, because of that release on YouTube and because of the relief by Sheriff Dodson's employees, our chief issued a press release documenting his perspective of the details of the actions taken. Not a surprise, particularly given all of the issues that have been going on relative to police out in the community from a national standpoint, and certainly wanted to get an appropriate comment out there for Alpine. On the tenth of September, the city attorney sent an email to us, to the city manager, and to the chief about a memo sent on September fourth regarding Alpine Police Department issues stating that there seemed to be widespread recognition of pattern slash practice of batteress and, uh, that were, uh, documented relative to the press release on September eighth. On September fifteenth, we, the city council, met at five thirty. There was no city attorney's report. Earlier on that day, at three fifteen, we all received an email from the city attorney. There were, and that email had two letters in it. One, it stated that the Alpine City Attorney had sent a letter to the Texas Attorney General regarding the open records regarding Sheriff Dodson's concern that certain Alpine Police Department officers were engaged in improper arrest without probable cause. Further, the Sheriff Dodson provided a copy of the Alpine Police Department arrest information and body cam information footage that was received from the Brewster County Attorney, Steve Houston. That was in that letter. There was a second letter released by the city attorney. It said, the Alpine, uh, in that, in that letter from the city attorney went to the Texas Criminal Investigation Division of the Texas Attorney General, which stated, "When I began to investigate whether this was an isolated issue or part of a bigger problem at the APD, I spoke with," and then he included the number of people he spoke with, "based on those discussions, I became concerned about the potential civil liability of the city of Alpine due to repeated civil rights violation of persons arrested without probable cause." Again, this is three weeks, uh, ago when this dialogue occurred. On September nineteenth, the Brewster County, uh, or the Sheriff's Office began allowing Alpine Police Department to enter prisoners into jail after hours without magistration. On September twenty-first, two days later, the city attorney met with the Brewster County Sheriff and sent a letter to the city manager, the mayor, and the Alpine Police Chief regarding that agreement that was to take effect the following day on September twenty-second. I note that the city council was not included in the letter. Right? I would also note that, Mayor, you sent the letter to KBLF, because I was told you gave the letter to KBLF, and to the Alpine Avalanche, without coordination with the city council or the city manager about whether that was a reasonable agreement or not. The core issue, in my view, is the city attorney has conducted meetings, written letters, uh, put a deal together with the Brewster County Sheriff, and publicly documented serious issues, yet has not taken the time, other than to send us a letter with, uh, relative, he did all this without any prior action or coordination with the city council. Further, the city attorney has not taken the action, this is as of prior to learning this evening, to document the alleged issues raised by the Brewster County Sheriff, the Brewster County Attorney or others, and presented that information to the city. There's been lots of hearsay and opinions, but until tonight, the first time we were notified that the city attorney, or that the Brewster County Attorney had documented issues. The one case that was spread relative to the one relative to the Brewster County Sheriff's Office, which, you know, frankly, that sheriff, who is now a member of the Alpine Police Department, was in fact, for many years, the principal Brewster County Chief Deputy. I refer back to section four point zero four, items number one, relative to our city charter and our expectations of the city attorney. One, serve as a legal advisor to the council, to all offices, department, and agencies of the city, and to all officers and employees of the city in matters related to their official duties. I think the frustration that I have, and I think the question we counsel need to be aligned about is, are we the ones supposed to be making policy decisions? Or is the city attorney supposed to be advising us according to item number one of paragraph four point zero four, to serve as legal advisor to the council so that we can make appropriate policy decisions and give direction? There are no questions. There are many legal matters that are on the table, but the concern that I have, and, you know, city attorney has appropriately documented, we, the city, are at significant liability because of the actions that have gone on far too long without actions being taken as a direct result of the issues being worked, and as we just pointed out, three weeks ago, those issues were raised. Now, after last night, after asking our city attorney to take action, he is finally taking action. I believe that's, I think those actions are finally taken care of. I don't think that's an appropriate way for the city attorney to be treating us, and frankly, I think the city attorney has put the city at risk by lack of action. With that, I'll be quiet and look for comments from the rest of council.
Do we have any comments from the council? Okay, there are none.
Yes, I do.
Yes, okay, Ramon.
Yes, um, I agree with much of what you've said, as councilman. Uh, but one thing I just can't seem to get out of my mind is there seems to be a total lack of, of communications, um, between the city and, of course, the county with respect to the pertinent issue of, of what to do with the arrestees or detainees, and I, from what I understood yesterday and before, from previous conversations, that our city manager has tried his best to, uh, get ahold of the sheriff and via letter, via telephone, uh, to have a sit-down, let's try to hack this out. It never happened, and apparently, from what I understand, there's not very good communications also between our chief and the, and the county sheriff. Um, but the one thing I see is that Mr. Thornton, in a way, maybe without prior, um, consultation with the city manager or, um, the council took it by himself to go and, and talk to the, the sheriff. And out of that meeting, they, he came out with a, a set of guidelines, which, as far as I can, uh, concerned, is a basic, uh, framework so that we can continue, or the city can continue a dialogue with the, with the county sheriff's department. And Mr. Thornton did it, and I'm glad he did, and he informed us of what he had done. And in doing that, as far as I'm concerned, he represented us and represented the city well. And I can say that having those items now on the table for discussion, I think it's up to our city manager to now reestablish, try to reestablish a contact and get a negotiation body and, and let's, uh, discuss issue with the sheriff's department. Let's get down to the basics of forming policy that we can vote on.
So, Ramon, I, I agree with you on those statements. That is not the issue I'm raising, okay? We, we voted on a resolution, uh, last night. It's item number six on our agenda that we approved on an action going forward. The issue I'm raising is that on September fifteenth, and prior to that, the city attorney put the city at significant risk by highlighting issues, did not take action to go back to the Brewster County Sheriff or the Brewster County Attorney who had told him that there were significant issues. He did not take that action until last night, and it puts the county, the city at significant risk, one. And number two, even though he wrote two letters that were our public, uh, information and not attorney-client privilege to the Texas Attorney General's Office, he chose not to discuss those letters with the city council. In my opinion, those are policy discussions that the city of Alpine, city council, should have been intimately aware of, most likely in executive session, because they reflect significant potential issues, and that's the issue that I'm raising here. In my opinion, the city attorney advises us, and then we give direction, and he did not choose to do that.
Can I refer that to, to Rod Thornton? Do you have a response to that, Rod?
Well, the, you know, my letters were trying to advise the council, you know, I, I don't know if, if the messenger here is being shot because of the message. I'm trying to, I was trying to advise the council about issues that have been raised to me regarding the police department, and I reported on those as I learned that, that information. So, uh, everything I've, and I've shared with the council.
So, I did not, the city council review with you on September first that we had asked you, and, and we did this in executive session, but I don't think I'm compromising anything by stating this. Did we not ask you that for all subsequent city council meetings, you would give a city attorney report and provide us insight on major issues going on?
You did ask that, and, uh, I didn't have one on the September fifteenth, but I did have one last night.
But on September fifteenth, prior to the city council meeting, it clearly you had spent time composing those letters prior to the city council meeting, because you published that letter to all of us on the fifth, uh, at the three o'clock, city council meeting started at five thirty. I'm very surprised if you would say, well, it just slipped my mind, uh, because all you had to do was have on there, instead of none, city attorney's report, and no matter what happens, as you did last night, and as we received, you always provide your charts at the last minute. So, so that's the issue about, what's the real motivation about why things take so long and what else is going on? I want to believe that we're being straight up about activities, but in my view, that's a pretty weak argument, particularly since two weeks before we'd had this direct discussion with, between council and you on that matter. So, uh, let me move on to number three, okay? Uh, number three is expectations that the city has regarding that the city attorney needs to make relative to his actions with the city of Alpine, because I said this would be third items. In my opinion, as the city attorney has already agreed, In my opinion, as the city attorney has already agreed, but had just commented, hasn't implemented, he needs to make a report at every city council meeting regarding matters in public and his executive session as appropriate. Number Two, that the city attorney will not write any letters or take action outside of the city unless for an emergency nature, without review and approval from the city manager or the city council. Number Three, that the city attorney will provide a report to the city council after every municipal court, discuss key actions and results from the actions of the city prosecutor. So those are, in my mind, three items that I believe are appropriate. I would appreciate council's perspective relative to whether you agree with those or not, or have others.
So I'm just curious, on the resolution, and I'm only bringing this because I'm just, I'm wondering about something. On the resolution that was passed last night for 2020-10-05, where it says that there was an agreement between the county judge, Ozarkano, on September 8th, in the presence of District Attorney Sandy Wilson. Who else was in that meeting?
Myself and Chief Martin. There was three of us, and, and the judge's assistant, Erica. There's actually five people in there, and she recorded that meeting as well.
So I'm curious as to if my council wasn't told about it, or even Rod knew about it?
Council was aware of that. In fact, on the September 1st meeting, after Sandy Wilson had sent out the email, I shared that with, with council, and I don't believe I'm breaching executive session on this, but Counselor Curry had asked to see the outcome from that meeting that Sandy Wilson had called.
Yeah.
And Sandy Wilson reported out on that on September 15th.
Yes.
But Rod wasn't invited to that?
No. No, Sandy Wilson had called, she is the chief law enforcement as the district attorney, and she called the meeting. I can't usurp her, her authority.
Is Sandy Wilson, I thought, handled criminal cases?
Her responsibility is to prosecute felony cases in the district.
I went back to that, if I recall, I think I remember on that meeting when I asked her, who had asked her about that, that letter that she sent out, and at first she said that she was told by council, which I don't recall, and then she said she took it upon herself. And I'm not sure if y'all remember that or not.
I don't remember her saying anything about council informing her of anything.
It's on the video.
I watched it. I don't remember saying that. I'll watch it again, though.
Yeah. I watched it twice, that's fine.
Yeah, me too.
So Lucy, I'm trying to, is this related to this specific action item? There are three things that I believe are appropriate for our city attorney, and I'm asking the rest of council, are we all aligned on those three items?
With all respect to Councilman Stevens, I, I am aligned. I think the requirements are good for future council meetings. The, the only thing is, what if I, or in my place, a councilman wants information to be added to his reports? Can we directly get in touch with Rod, and we have to go through the city manager and say, "Will Rod be willing to give us an update on a specific issue or, or item?"
So, I, I will make comment, because I've asked Rod for lots of things, and I've never gone through the city manager. He works for us, according to the charter.
Yeah, I work for the city council as a whole.
Yep. So by any council member, and/or, again, back to the charter, he is a legal advisor to council, that's all of us, to all offices, departments, and agencies of the city, and all officers and employees of cities. Now, Eric Zimmer has policy within the city, because he runs the city, about what policy he wants relative to any of his direct reports, talking directly with the city attorney, but as his employer, we can call Rod and say, "Please do the following," and he'll bill us accordingly.
That is to say, if, for example, I would, I'm interested in maybe a future council meeting, that Rod give us an update on what's happening with the company that we contracted pages ago to do a street survey. Do I submit that directly to Rod, or do I have to go through the city manager? That's what I'm asking.
So here's my view, here's how I do it. I put it on the agenda, then would call and line up with Eric, that says, "Hey, I'm going to ask Rod to make sure he comes in," and as it turns out, we're covering that on executive session tonight.
I'm in alignment with those three items you talked about, Rick. I think they're reasonable, and I think Rod will probably agree with us on that also.
No problem.
What were they again? I'm sorry.
So I think getting those three issues resolved, we can move forward on this.
So, I heard Lucy request, what were they? I will state them again, and these are the expectations we, the city council, have of the city attorney. This does not include expectations that the city manager, chief of police, building codes inspector, and the head of animal control have of the city attorney, because as we talked earlier, there are a number of issues on Item One that have got to get sorted out, particularly relative to support from prosecution. And, but these are the ones that we, as city council, have. Number One, the city attorney needs to make a report at every city council meeting regarding matters in public and executive session as appropriate. So not one city council meeting will go by without the city attorney making a presentation. Number Two, the city attorney will not write any letters or take action outside of the city unless there is an emergency nature, without approval of the city council or the city manager. Remember, we're about policy, the city attorney is about advice. Number Three.
One, one matter about that, that particular thing, and it goes, for instance, to, to some of the matters we'll talk about in executive session, lawsuits pending. Frequently, there's a need for me, representing the city in litigation, to correspond with opposing counsel. Frequently, you know, I need to send them a letter to ask for information, or tell them to try to settle the case, or send them some discovery. All sorts of different things can come up, and these, these are not matters that always need to wait for two weeks for city council. These are things I can copy the city manager with, and the mayor with, I mean, there's not, oh, but to, to have to have routine matters submitted for approval to the council is a, can be a logjam on matters that y'all entrust me with routinely, such as the two cases we're going to be talking about in executive session.
So Rod, fair point. In my opinion, that's included under approval of the city council or city manager. However, it's very easy to add a few words to that sentence that goes something like, unless it's part of an agree-to strategy, the council or the city manager is supporting relative to legal action, or the city attorney is representing the city.
That's fine.
Okay.
I'll cover it.
Yep, okay, because that was not the intent. The intent is, you know, before we go cut any deals with anyone, there needs to be an agreement, and that's the frustration.
That would always come back to y'all.
Yep, and that's part of the frustration, without rehashing old business about having the dialogue with the sheriff, but that's another item and a different element. Item Number Three, the city attorney will provide a report to the city council after every municipal court, to discuss key actions and results from a prosecution perspective. And the reason, in my view, that's important, is it provides an opportunity to get direct dialogue about how the city prosecutor is managing the cases, and it provides an opportunity for the chief, for the head of our building department, and for the head of our animal control, to be able to have a dialogue directly with all of us, so we don't find ourselves in a situation where we are right now, where, I quote, "The building inspector has lack of confidence in the city attorney." The chief of police doesn't trust the city attorney, and our head of animal control has had repeat offenders, and it does not feel there is appropriate support. These are the people that the city attorney actually works for when it comes to supporting cases. So those are the three items. Is that helpful, Lucy?
Yes, and you said on the reports, you had to give those municipal court reports on city council meetings?
At city council, after every municipal court.
Okay.
Okay, so given we don't have a judge, not going to have municipal court here coming up on the next docket, but when we get those going, there's going to be a big backlog to go work through those.
One last, one last question, if I may. The, and I may be going off on a tangent with this question, but I feel like I should let it out. Regarding the, the establishment of the agendas for each of the council meetings, before, if I understood correctly, all agenda items go into the city secretary. She formulated into a draft agenda, that goes to the city manager, the city manager confers, but at the time before, the attorney, the city attorney, was also involved in giving final permission or authorization for the agendas for city meetings. Is that still the case?
No, I don't review them in advance.
And our procedures do not require, so our procedures say, well, there are people who can put items on the agenda, and the city manager does not have the opportunity to take off or put on what we members of council choose to put on. The city manager can certainly put items on, and it's up to the city manager and the city secretary working through. Again, we have a policy on that, preparing agendas. It is an ordinance that we have adopted. We ought to certainly look at that ordinance and make sure we're comfortable with what that ordinance says.
Right, yeah, and one of the things to note, too, Ramon, most items either come, most items actually come directly to me. I use a share file with Cynthia, and that's what we build the agenda off of. The, the council and can, can basically put agenda items, the, the city councillors can put agenda items on any section. The city manager can put agenda items on any section. The mayor can put items, certainly on the mayor's report, on proclamations and information and discussion, but only, only the city councillors and the city manager can put any items that are actionable, require resolution ordinance.
Wait.
And if I heard correctly, that, if I heard correctly, the, the addition of agenda items requests to go to you, Eric?
Yeah, they, they can certainly come to me, or come to Cynthia. I'm ultimately responsible for the preparation of the agenda. I've worked through Cynthia on that, but I do look at every agenda item.
Okay.
There's a cutoff, there's a 5:00 PM cutoff on Wednesday.
Okay, I think that's something that could go on the agenda to, to discuss. We're kind of getting a little off the subject here.
Yep.
So, yeah, let's put that, and we can put that on an agenda item. Right now, we need to continue on Item Number Seven.
Yeah, and this is a point of information for those who are interested. It comes under administration of code ordinances, and take a look at how we manage from a city council standpoint under Chapter 23. So I put those on, on the table, as, and in addition, there is significant action, in my mind, as I mentioned earlier, between the city manager, the city attorney, the chief of police, the head of building and animal control, that require a resolution. And I guess, action item number four, is that at the next city council meeting, that the city manager and city attorney come back with recommendations on how they intend to proceed, and what specific actions the city attorney will take to resolve the concerns of lack of confidence, the lack of trust, and concern over items prosecuted at the municipal.
Okay, any more discussion on this?
Are the municipal court meetings, can those be done through Zoom, so others can attend and see if they can't be there in person?
That's, that's going to be a separate item, Lucy. We don't even have a judge right now, so there is no court.
Yeah. And trying to find a judge is... Is he volunteering to be a judge, or what? But no, you know, last time was, you know, like pulling teeth to find a, a judge, and now it's even harder, but I'm still looking, and hopefully I can get the same result within the next couple of weeks or so.
Okay, so with that, I'd like to call for the question.
Okay, call for the question. All those in favor of the motion by Councilman Stevens? Raise your right hand. Although I can't see everybody, so... Jill.
That is your hand up or down?
Jill. Okay, Betty, are you in favor of the motion?
Yes.
Okay, Maria?
Yes.
Okay, very good. Ramon? Ramon?
He needs to actually unmute himself.
Sorry about that. Okay, are you in favor of the motion, sir?
Yes, I am.
Okay, Lucy?
I didn't hear the motion, I wasn't...
It was discussing all those items that better, you know, report to, to council after all the municipal court hearings, better communication.
If I may, there are, there are four items.
Four, okay. You want to recap them real quick?
The city attorney make a report at every city council meeting regarding matters in public or an executive session as appropriate. The city attorney will write, will not write any letters or take actions outside of the city unless for an emergency nature, without approval from the city council or city manager, or unless it's involved in strategies that the city attorney and the city council have already agreed upon, where the city attorney is representing the city. Number Three, that the city attorney will provide a report to the city council after every municipal court to discuss key actions and results from the prosecutors', prosecution activities. And number four, is that the city attorney, city manager, chief of police, and animal control will report back at the next city council meeting to discuss the city attorney's approach to resolution of the lack of confidence, and issues associated with, with what's going on in court.
Okay.
Hey, are you in favor of that motion?
Yes.
Okay, the motion carries then. Thank you all very much, it was great discussion on this. Okay, let's move on to Item Number Eight, Ms. Curry.
Okay, this is to discuss, consider, and take appropriate action, approving the proposed changes on Chapter 10, and the animals, of the, the code ordinances on Chapter 10, Animal Section 10, 186, dangerous dogs. And it's an ordinance that the animal advisory board has been working on for a really long time, and we have added a bunch of stuff in there to, so that you could, so that the people can determine... And we have added a bunch of stuff in there to, so that you could, so that the people can determine what a dangerous dog is and, and how the animal control officers can determine what is a dangerous dog. And then some of the consequences of not taking care of the dog. So that's what, that's what we put in and then I hope y'all read it, but that's, that's what this is.
So your motion is?
To, well I
You got to make a motion. You just read, you just explained it.
Oh, okay, so discuss, consider, and take appropriate action to do this, to, to, for the changes.
In chapter 10, animals.
Animal section 10, 186, dangerous dogs.
Can, can I offer some help to my fellow council members?
Okay.
What, what I believe Councilwoman Curry meant to say was she would like for council to approve the first reading of chapter 10, animal section 10-186 regarding dangerous dogs.
That's exactly what I meant to say.
That's what you were going to say.
Exactly.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Okay, motion made in second, okay, all those in, any discussion? See none? Okay, all those in favor of the motion, raise your right hand. Oppose, like sign, the motion carries, okay. Job well done, Ms. Curry.
Sort of. For the part at the end.
Now we're going to move to item number 10, city council comments and answers. And I will start with you, Ms. Curry.
What, what is this? What are we doing?
We're, item number 10, city council comments and answers.
Oh, okay, well, that was a really long, awesome meeting. I'm glad that we got to have a break in the middle of it and come back to it. And that was great, it was just great, thank you.
Okay, Councilman Bolivas.
I agree with Councilman Curry, long meeting, but discussions were good and we needed to get them on the table. Thanks to all involved.
Okay, Councilman, it's Daryl.
Yes, I agree that it was a very good meeting and we got a lot accomplished.
Councilman Escudero.
I think we had a really good meeting and to me it's very important that we all show respect. I think that we also all need to work together.
Certainly, Councilman Stevens.
I've said enough, so thanks very much.
Oh, that was quick.
We still have executive session to go through.
Yeah, but I want to thank the council for, for all the great dialogue we had. And this, I think, adds a lot of clarity and direction. And moving forward, we can have smoother meetings and, and better communications amongst all the departments. Thank you all very much. And one thing I want to add also is the condolences to Joe Torres' family, AKA Bagu. May he rest in peace. Okay, sir. Councilman Stevens.
So, Mr. Mayor, I propose that pursuant to Texas government code 55, one dot, 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 that we move into executive session, discuss two items. One, discuss and update the Park Hill Smith and Cooper contract. And also to discuss the Unipacific declaratory and injunctory relief filing.
Okay.
I'll second.
Okay, it's second. What time is it please?
Seven, nineteen twenty-four.
Nineteen twenty-four, all those in favor of the motion, raise your right hand. Oppose, like sign, motion carries. Y'all want a break or you want to, let's go ahead and continue with? It's up to y'all.
I'm fine, just keep it, keep it going.
Okay, let's go ahead and go then.
Can you move? Perfect, thank you.
There we go. Two, three, four. Good. Mayor, you'll have to unmute.
I'm worked. There you go. Finally got it under. Okay, everybody on?
Yes.
Okay, I'll intertain the motion and get back on to regular session.
Mr. Mayor, I propose to move back into public session.
Okay, is there a second?
A second.
Okay, the time is?
Nineteen fifty-three.
Okay, and all those in favor, raise your right hand. Oppose, like signed, we're back in regular session.
Mr. Mayor, I propose we take no action regarding the case of Park, Hill, Smith, and Cooper.
Okay, is there a second on that?
A second.
Okay, any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, raise your right hand. Okay, oppose, like signed, we're back in regular session.
Mr. Mayor, I propose we take no action with regard to Union Pacific declaratory and injunctive relief filing.
Okay, is there a second?
A second.
So we got several seconds here now.
I'll put Betty down.
Okay, any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, raise your right hand. Oppose, okay, motion carries. Thank you all very much.
You may not propose.
And there's no discussion on it, and we adjourned. Thank you very much. Hasta la vista.
Great, thank you.
Wonderful.